Hey, good morning. Thank you for your patience. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you the humblest way we know how. Lord, we come with bowed heads and humble hearts, realizing as King Solomon prayed, that God on earth have the wisdom and the insight to lead your people to give him a wise and understanding heart. We pray the same for us of the council as we lift up our mayor, his staff, every department head, that we can continue to lead our great city in the direction, God, that you would have it to go. God, we can't do anything without you. We lean not to our own understanding, but we look totally unto you, God, and we give you the glory for all that shall take place throughout the remainder of this day, this day of color, God, National Day of Diversity. Help us to be able to embrace one another's differences as you gave us a rainbow with the sound of a covenant that you love unity in the midst of diversity. We give you the praise, we give you all the glory, all the honor, in sin Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session, council meeting, and special work session held on October 15th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October 11th through the 17th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is proclamations and commendations. I don't believe we have any of those today, do we? Okay. All right, then we'll move into section eight, unfinished business. We have none today. Section nine is new business. I believe we have three items for new business today.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'll be, I'll be quick. But the first one I have is an ordinance condemning the fiscal year 2025 budget to set aside funding in the amount of $32,397 for the awarded grant funding for the bulletproof vest. This is a grant that we apply for, I think regularly, from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, Bulletproof Vest Partnership. That's a mouthful. The BVP. And again, the total grant amount's $32,397. Our, I think our matching amount is 50/50, so that'd be $16,198.19. And this would be for a total of 27 replacement vests and six new hire vests within a two-year period in the grant award. So if there's no objections to this, so that we can get these officers the equipment they need, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to suspend the rules and consider the ordinance today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent.
Move to adopt. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one I have, Mr. President, is from the mayor's office. This is a resolution requesting the Edgewall County Legislative Delegation immediately pursue legislation to require the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, also known as ADM, to timely notify local elected officials and area residents of any facilities cited by ADM for violations of environmental regulations. And this comes out, as many of you know, the issue that we were made aware of several weeks ago by the EPA concerning the Tetrix plant here in Gaston. Councilman Avery and Mayor Ford have done a lot to put together community meetings and try to keep the community as informed as they possibly can. But upon further investigation, where this all comes from is we later learned that Tetrix had been, had been cited by the Alabama Department of Environmental Management in 2012, 2014, and 2019. However, ADM never notified the City of Gaston of these citations or that they were in violation. So in order, we kind of are where we are right now, and the EPA's gotten involved and they're doing a great job, and we're going to get this cleaned up. But moving forward, we want to make sure the mayor's adamant that this never happens again. So what we're asking our local legislators to do is to pass a piece of legislation that would require ADM, anytime they cite a company like Tetrix, to automatically send notification to the local municipalities in that area and say, hey, you've got an issue, we just want to make you aware of it, so that we could stay on top of it and not, you know, not get informed at the 11th hour like we did with Tetrix. So with that in mind, if there's no objection to this, we've got the legislative session coming up, and this will have to be drafted in RLF and all that, so if there's no objections, I'd like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I say something on that, please?
Yes, please.
So this, like Councilman Wilson was talking about, this has been going on since 2012. They have been cited and, and warned of this up until, back to that date. So we just want to make sure this doesn't happen again, as Councilman Wilson said, and thank y'all for the resolution, and we'll work with the Legislative Delegation in getting this piece of legislation drafted up. However, we did have a call today with Tetrix. I wanted to update y'all real quick on that. 118 attended the meeting excluding the EPA and city employees. That was just 118 residents. By Thanksgiving, all contracts should be secured for the disposal. Between Thanksgiving and Christmas, they plan to move out all the cyanide. This should be completed by the end of the year. So things are progressing, it's moving. The resolution is needed just for the future, so that the people will know that there's something in their neighborhood in the future that this would, they would be required to notify the residents. So thank y'all for taking that up for the new business.
Well, and the one silver lining to an otherwise really troubling thing that we weren't ever notified about this, if there's a way to spin that positively, just to reassure everybody, again, this stuff has been there since 2012. It is stable, it's, nothing's changed, it's not, it's no more dangerous now than it has been. It is stable, it's in containers that are sealed, there's no leakage or anything that's caused this to be elevated. It's just finally the EPA got around to it, and now they're cleaning it up. And again, as I had mentioned before in previous meetings, that I flat out asked the EPA director that was addressing us in layman's terms, as somebody who doesn't understand cyanide and the gasification of chemicals and all this, on a scale of one to 10, with 10 being the worst thing you've ever seen and one being no big deal, where does this rank? And he said a four. He said, we actually have, I think it was three or six other sites in North Alabama that they are actively cleaning up these same materials from. All those sites are stable, there have been no accidents at any of them. So again, I know that's not necessarily a good thing, that it's, it's been cited as far back as 2012, but I want you to know that it is stable, it's what we've been told by the experts on this, and there's no indication that there's any elevated level of risk before they can get this, all this stuff out of here by Christmas. Okay, so if, if, any other?
You got the next one?
Yeah, I was going to move on if there's no more.
Yeah, anybody else have any comments on that? All right, then we can go to the next one.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. This last one is from the Engineering Department. This is one of the final steps in a giant project of investments that we've made in the City of Gaston to just increase the overall level of quality of life here in Gaston. This is a resolution authorized granting an easement to the Alabama Power Company to serve the $11.9 million renovated Nakalula Falls campground. If you guys haven't been up there, or at least had an opportunity to maybe look across the falls or something there, I think the project is very close to completion. We're well past the 50% mark up there. I think it's going to be great. Councilman Robinson, I know, has spent a lot of time up there, and he's had rave reviews of what they've been able to do so far up to this point. So this will actually just grant Alabama Power the easement to be able to come in and run the power infrastructure, which they will be responsible for maintaining, to these 80-some brand-new campsites up there, as well as the new, the new main lodge area. There's a new swimming pool up there, right? There's a couple of other auxiliary buildings. So this will be the power service, the easement they need to bring the power to that whole new campground project. So if there's no objections, I'd like to consider this under new business today, please.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. That's all for new business today. Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Thank you, Mayor Ford, for your comments on the Tetrix situation. We'll go to item 10, department reports, committees, boards, any of those this morning? If not, then we would like to bring up Craig Scott and Darlene Harkrow with Community Thanksgiving Event. This is the annual event that these folks are involved in, that, and also Mr. Buster Porch, yes, and welcome this morning. Thank y'all once again, it doesn't seem like it's been 12 months, but I guess it has.
There we go, we have green lights now. First off, thank y'all so very much for allowing us to come back. Yes, we've been on this all year long, and so here we are, down to the wire now. I want to thank you again, I just cannot express how much we appreciate all y'all do for, for Community Thanksgiving, because again, without y'all it would never happen. To give you an update on last year, we planned on feeding 8,500 people, we ended up at 10,556 people. With that, I stand in awe knowing how God moves to feed the people, so I was, we all were like, wow, that's cool. With that, that means that of course our funds now are needing to be raised again. We're shooting for $45,000. We're right now about $29,000 left to raise. So with that, we ask each one of y'all to be able to give to us, help us with this. We know, we realize as a board that this cannot be done without community leaders helping as well as the people of our communities. So each one of you have a flyer in front of you that we are asking you, that you will share with your, on your Facebook pages, in your social media accounts, your webpages, simply because getting that information out lets people come who are needing, who need that, as well as to help volunteer, as well as support. Because last year, we done it with 920 volunteers. We need way more than that, to the extent we're doing. So COVID had kind of shut us back a little bit about people coming, but we're, we're praying that people will be, if we get the word out enough, people can come and volunteer. We also, with that, I, I know that y'all know our mission, but this year, we're really adding a little bit to feed the homeless, the elderly, the hurting, the lonely, and families who are just desperately trying to make ends meet. Because I think one meal for Thanksgiving costs a lot of money. We want them to know that they can come and be a part of us without having that extra expense. Of course, with that flyer, I've, I stand back and as I think about how the Lord has really done, I know that great things happen when everybody's giving a little. So I thank you again for all the things that you do for us, for promoting us and helping us to make this event happen. And again, we thank you so very much for your support, and may God richly bless you for all you do for us.
Thank you, Darlene.
So Darlene is the chair, and we say, yes, ma'am. So she makes sure that we run this as a well-oiled machine. But I'm going to tell you a little quick story, and this is what Community Thanksgiving is all about. So last year, I, right at the end, as we were running out of food and all, I was helping with deliveries. So we, we have dine-in over at the venue, we have takeouts, folks can come in and take a meal out, or we deliver. So it was right at the end of the day, I was headed back to the venue and got a call from our, from, from our folks that said, lady had just called in, she's looking for two meals, she lives on Fourth Street. I said, I've got three with me and I'll stop by. And they said, well, the instruction is, when you get there, knock on the door and come in. So I said, okay. So I found the location, knocked on the door, and opened the door, and Community Thanksgiving. And she said, I'm here, I'm in the bedroom. I said, okay. I came around the corner, and there she was in bed with her two prosthetic legs on the floor. So she had a small refrigerator in there, but her home health service wasn't operating on Thanksgiving Day. She had just heard from a neighbor that we were, we had the meals going, so she had called in at the last minute. So I had three meals, she wanted two, I left all three. That's what Community Thanksgiving is all about, helping the folks that can't get a meal otherwise.
Well, thank you, Craig. Thank you. Mayor?
Well, I just want to reiterate, I've been involved since I've been, since I returned to Gaston in 2008, and I've done a lot of things as, you know, before I moved down, I helped the kids, the service organization. This has been one of the most enjoyable and rewarding things that I've ever done. And I just want to reiterate what Darlene just said. 10,556 meals were served last year. 10,556. 920 volunteers. So there's two things that's always needed. Volunteers and money. So if you like to look into your pocket today and give a little bit, and give a little bit more later, we will accept that today. Money and volunteers. To all the residents who like to do something, who don't have anything to do that week, Monday, that following Monday prior to the Thanksgiving, something is going on, cleaning up. Every day, there's needed volunteers, so to the resident of Gaston, to the resident of Edgewall County, come on down and volunteer your money, volunteer your time. All is well needed, and you will be rewarded when you see what is going on. So I thank you.
Thank you. All right, going now to remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor Ford?
Yeah, Darlene, Craig, and Mayor, thank you for what you do and for doing this every year, and of course, we will be supporting you. But thank you for what you do for the citizens of Gaston and surrounding areas. I wanted to remind a couple of things. John Moore brought this to my attention, a voting box that used to be at George Wallace Drive is being moved to Beckfield House, that's the gymnasium on Gaston State's campus. It'll be easier for the people, the no hill, no curb, and also for the disabled people that will be able to get in and out better to vote. So that box has changed, just FYI, we got an election coming up. The next thing, I want to talk about the Arts Council. They did a great job. If you missed this, Councilwoman Dixie Minatra did a great job in her district on Wall Street, and we had a party, didn't we? It was fun. But we want to thank Councilwoman Minatra and the Arts Council, Billy Jenkins and all those that participated. It was a fun night. And if you look at the pictures, I did dance. I don't know if you call that dance, but I danced. So we had a good time, but thank you to the Gaston Arts Council. Congratulations to the Public Affairs Department. The City of Gaston was named a finalist for the National Civic Experience Award, Award from Civics Plus. That could not have been done without the council, and thank y'all for passing all these things that we have brought before us, the Hey Gaston app, the website redesign, the technology like Text My Gov, the rep ID, and the social media. But to Michael Rogers and his department, thank you for everything y'all have done, and to Brett Johnson, and to everybody, Garrett and Jesse, the whole team, they've come leap years from where we used to be. Big news, I've been getting a lot of messages about this on Facebook and private messages, when is the Free Dumpster Day? I want to tell you, it's free, but you better come early, because when they fill up and we transport them, it's over. And last year, we were over in a short amount of time. So it is October the 26th, from 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM, we'll have dumpsters at West Meagan Sports Complex, East Gaston Community Center, and the former YMCA building parking lot. The landfill is also open these hours, which is 7:00 AM to 12:00, free of charge, only for Gaston residents. So if you have anything you need to dump or get rid of, this is your chance and this is your time. And also, please check out all the Halloween events we have at the AMP, and you can see it on the website or the AMP's Facebook page, that there's a lot of events going on. Y'all, there's a lot of moving parts going on right now, it's fantastic, we're two years into our term, almost, I think, about another month, but we've got a lot of stuff happening. We've got the Falls ribbon cutting happening on November the 7th for the Animal Habitat. They're already breaking ground on the new ramp for the train station to move where they can drop off back over at the Animal Habitat again. That was an outcry from the public, that we went ahead and authorized. The Gaston State Sports Plex is moving rapidly. They finished filling in the dirt on the softball field, so now they can do 225 on those fields, 225 feet, which will allow us to access more tournaments. We also are in final drawings with the Meagan Complex for the swim auditorium for the Aqua Center, so, and I know as a council, we're meeting with the group in Tampa. Hopefully, they'll have their final design, and then y'all can tweak it from there. I mean, the city hall plans are coming finalized, the hotel plan here is coming finalized, so it's just, it's a lot of fun times and a lot of moving parts. But thank you to the council for what you do, because we wouldn't be able to do anything without you and Iva. Yeah.
Thanks, Mayor Ford. Appreciate it. Councilwoman Latham? No comments today? All right, Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just ditto to all the comments the mayor just made. I just always like, hey, I'm an optimist, I always like to just highlight the things I see going on around our city. I love the City of Gaston, so just exciting to see roads being paved, so many improvements throughout the city. The Cookout looks like it's opening soon, another construction right behind it on East Broad, one to the right of it up near the Whataburger location, East Broad, District 1, new business is open there, South Levin's getting new sidewalks, the Falls, all this going on over there. I'm excited about the City of Gaston. Thank you, Mr. John Moore, for Tropical Smoothie. Every time I ride throughout the city, I notice moving parts and so many things that are being done. So just want to give a shout out, thank you, Mayor Ford. And I want to give a shout out to Councilman Avery and Mayor Ford for just addressing the community, the community and all the people that came out to the meeting that were concerned about that neighborhood. It was just great to see so many people come out to get that information. And just want to ask everybody to pray for the Woods family. I just found out, through text, Mr. Woods passed away. And our children, of course, depend on Woods' transportation to get them back and forth to school every day, so keep the family in your prayers. Thank you all, former mayor, Ms. Darlene, and Mr. Hall, for all that you all do every year, and as the mayor said, we certainly will be supporting your efforts. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery?
Yeah, Mr. President. I'll follow behind Councilman Smith as it relates to the Woods family. Also, want to give condolences to Louis Fuller and his family, who has been a cornerstone and a stand-up gentleman of our community as well, so a good friend of mine and the family. Also, a big one is Colonel Harrison and his family as well, for the outstanding print that he has put on so many young people in this community that are, some are not even young anymore, that they have gone to live a outstanding life based on those great things that he have installed in them. And so as this family, these families prepare to give their final moments, just want the city and those of us that have memories of these people to continue to keep the families lifted in, in their thoughts and prayers as they go throughout their day. To all the breast cancer survivors, thank you for your continuous efforts of being positive, the events that you have put on throughout the city, the state and our nation. To those families that also have lost those through breast cancer, we continue to think of you and to contribute to those efforts, to this study. Having family to experience this as well, my cousin Matthew Knowles have experienced this, he continues to do efforts and provide services to families that are interested. And so stay connected to our page, and we'll share those, those events that you can be a part of and those talks, because again, we kind of sometimes go freely throughout our days and not think that this, we could be a, a part of, of, a recipient of these particular cancers, and not knowing that they could be living within us. So the early detection is, is, is good. And so let's make sure that we just kind of stay connected and then also share this information to family and friends. Want to give a big shout out to A.J. Tinker, who's home visiting, he, one of our West Point students here from the City of Gaston, went through Gaston City School Systems, and so want to continue to highlight him and motivate him, encourage him to stay on the, on the good foot as it relates to what he's doing and continue to be the shining light at West Point as it relates to Gaston, Alabama. Want to make mention, the mayor has mentioned as it relates to Tetrix, and it's mentioned on the attendance, thank everyone that came out, thank EPA, thank all the city workers and those that have been there hands-on as it relates to Tetrix, getting the word out, and those, just everything in particular. The meeting this morning went well with update, and so all of the information had been given, and so appreciate that again. Another highlight, as had been mentioned, Hey Gaston app, please download the Hey Gaston app. All of these announcements and things that are going on as it relates to activities, events is on that app. Those that, I've getting a lot of calls, as you know, can you come over here and look at this, can you come over here and look at this? The same thing that I can do as it relates to, or what I will do as it relates to those things that you have concerns about, you can do. This app has give you the opportunity to also do that yourself. I don't mind coming to look at it, please believe that you continue to call, but I'm going to also show this app to you so that you can also report it yourself. It's very good that you know what you can do and what this city has invested in as it relates to technology, so that you can do those things and then get feedback, but it's good that you know the information for yourself and then share it with your friends and family. FOP Trunk or Treat at the venue, 1031, was that a Thursday, I think? 1031, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, probably presents its FOP Gaston, Edgewall County Lodge, number 2, the City of Gaston, Gas Police Department, Gaston Fire Department, Gaston Fire Union, Edgewall County Sheriff Office, Gaston State Police Department, Advantage Ambulance Service, Aimed Ambulance Service, EMA, and so many others are doing their annual trunk or treat at the venue, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Please go out and visit. Also, on this Saturday, on Tuscaloosa Avenue, our annual, which we've changed the name of, it's still our trunk or treat program, event, but it's Pinktober, as we again highlight those breast cancer survivors and victims of breast cancer. But on Tuscaloosa Avenue, from Carver Square down to North Ninth Street, I believe, is where the trunk or treat will start and end. Or you can, you can park at either of those avenues there and then feel free to walk the sidewalks to those persons that will be participating with the trunk or treat. And that's this Saturday from Octo, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And I, oh, I want to definitely highlight again, the Free Dumpster Day, please, 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 because it's been asked when we're going to do it again and how great it is, how great of a program or event that the, the city put on, we need to do it more. Here is the opportunity again, so make sure that you gather all of those items, and as the mayor said, please arrive early. Please arrive early, they do fill up. Obviously, the city believes that it's, the residents believe that it's a good opportunity and good thing being done. Make sure that you get there on time and make reservation to get your things and items out there early, so that you can participate in this and be a part of the process of cleaning up our community. I'll leave it at that, thank you. You have the time.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Wilson?
I don't have anything.
All right. Councilwoman Minatra?
Just, this is the weekend to purge, so Family Savings is offering a Free Shred Day on Friday from 10:00 to 2:00. So Dumpster Day follows on Saturday from 7:00 AM until noon, so your opportunity to get organized. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to bring up Louis Fuller, a great, great man, a business owner here in town. Did a lot of things. Always took time for me. If I needed a conversation or a phone call, he always, he always took time to talk to me, just to want to keep his family in our thoughts and prayers. Everything in Gadsden, I think, right now is looking great. I know there's some negativity out there. Sometimes people talk about what's going on, but if you look around, everything is super clean. We're moving in the right direction. Stuff's getting built. I've always said, if you go through a town and there's construction going on, then they're going in the right direction. And I think everywhere you look around here, there's something, sometimes construction going on, remodeling, or new businesses going up. So I feel like we're, we are, I don't feel like we are heading in the right direction. It's going to, we are halfway through in a couple of weeks with our first term, and I feel like we've done a great job this first half and looking forward to the second half. And let's see, Nakalula Falls, we have the, we have a mushroom fair going on this weekend up there.
I bet you do paint my head.
Mushroom fair, so there'll be some traffic up there again, so everybody just be safe, drive safe. There'll be some folks camping, and it should be a fun, fun event. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. Councilman Wilson, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, please forgive me.
Councilman Smith?
No, please. There will be an event at Back 40 tomorrow at 6:00 PM. The young lady, Kayla, who brought her staff here, brought her entire staff from Dallas. They all were at church Sunday, and they were excited about the meeting that's going to take, the startup event that's going to take place Wednesday at 6:00 PM at Back 40. Just thought I'd mention that. It's open to the public for anybody who would like to attend. Thank you.
Man, that Back 40, 15 years they've been in this city. Can you believe that? 15 years. Yeah? Just creating jobs, tax revenue. Borrowing my name? Yeah, borrowing. Using my name, but that's okay. Yeah. But I digress. That's, all right, I too want to remember Colonel Carl Harrison. You know, there's few people in our lifetimes, each of us in our lifetimes, that we'll come across a Carl Harrison. There is, only God knows how many lives he has touched in this city in his time as a ROTC instructor, beloved by all who came across his path, 91 years on this earth. And I'm sure he heard the words, "Well done, good and faithful servant," when he met the Lord face to face the other day. So just keep the Harrison family in your thoughts and prayers. Also want to remember a friend of mine that in my district, Steve Wood, also passed away just recently, also a neighbor of Mayor Ford. Steve Wood was one of the most remarkable guys I ever met. He moved to Gadsden. His wife was one of our new physicians here in town. I guess this would have been probably around 15 to 20 years ago. Unfortunately, she succumbed early in life to cancer. Steve and his wife had a, at the time, I think, a 3rd grader, and Steve chose to remain in Gadsden and raised his wonderful and beautiful daughter, Audria, who is now in medical school at UAB, highly successful young lady, great athlete, just a great person. But Steve, as you, some of you may or may not know, at one time was probably the, in the top 5 male models in the whole world. He was an international model.
Till I came along.
Yeah, until Councilman Wilson popped in there. But... We all know that story. He had an outstanding career and was a great car enthusiast, but was a, was a good guy and was a friend to a lot of people, did a lot of favors for just a lot of folks, but raised a wonderful daughter, and so we're going to miss Steve also. He's a great guy. Really was, really good guy. And last but not least, just want to give a shout out and a thank you to the city, to the employees of the city of Gadsden. Mayor Ford can attest to this firsthand, because he's their, he's their administrator. But y'all, we are blessed with some really good people that work for the city of Gadsden from A through Z. Anything that you, we talk about all the things that are going on in the city of Gadsden every week, and there are a lot of things going on, but everything that we talk about requires city employees to make that happen. So I just want to thank our city employees. They work long and hard hours, many, you know, 7 days a week. You know, the city doesn't work 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. It's a 24-hour-a-day city, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. So thank you to our employees that come to work, show up with good attitudes, and do a fine job for our, for our city. So with that being said, we wish everybody a good day. We'll be back next week.